What did he do to that? And he's like, no idea. All right, cool.
You okay?
So I came back out and I uh just filled in.
That's what we're with, but then.
Here's the speaker. So I feel like I have a case that I was walking up. And so, you know, it's like, oh, where is one? And I was like, you know, the dude, he's sadly here.
I'm just standing over here. I'm just stay out of the.
Is it that way?
Yeah.
You both doing that to her.
So.
Yeah.
Here.
I will be posted.
I know.
They're very.
Oh, I would think they're. Um. They weren't on Dan. No, you're not getting any specific looking down. Or uh less. Done very quick. It's just. Meredith, can you hear us?
Can you hear us, Mer- Meredith? Do you can't hear us? I'm just wondering if Dan's gonna join. You, I I think your uh mic might be muted.
You're muted, Meredith. Uh, you do need five people to have a quorum, so.
Oh, no, those tres cuatro.
One, two, three. You have enough, yeah.
Oh, five, okay, yeah, you're, okay, we are good. Okay, I guess we could start then.
All right, thank you. Tonight, we are having our regular meeting of the Carbondale Tree Board. And uh let's do our roll call. Uh, Joanne Tople. Lisa Page.
Here.
Dan Bullock. Meredith Bullock.
We see her.
You're still muted, Meredith.
Yeah, you just have.
See you, just to let you know, oh. There's someone else on. Dan, is that you?
Oh, oh, I'm unmuted.
Yay, we got you. Okay, um Josh Crawford.
Present.
Noah Sakamoto.
Here.
Vanessa Harmony.
Present.
And Les Kuhn.
It's Joanne.
Here, okay. Okay, you have quorum.
And we do not know Wes.
I don't, I didn't get a word, any word for him, so he might be on his way still.
Alrighty. So uh moving on to our minutes from last meeting. Any modifications? Actually. Yeah, anything that we need to change in the, in the minutes? Can we get? Say again?
There was a typo too.
Can you um?
You, if there any typos, if there any typos or misspellings, you can just contact me in advance of the meeting. But if there's anything that's substantial, then we can bring it up in the meeting.
Okay. So may I have a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting?
A motion to approve?
Second.
Hold second emotion.
Okay, thank you. All right, public comment. No individuals in our audience tonight. Okay. Let's move on then. We have on our agenda here uh the Citizen Pruning Program. This was brought up in one of our previous meetings uh as a, an idea, a uh concept. And uh Vanessa will be presenting that.
So there, on the third page of your agenda, you have the most recent PDF of a document describing three citizen proving, pruning programs. Um, and then there's also some links on the bottom to some additional citizen pruning programs. Um, and if you view the PDF electronically, all of the blue are hyperlinks to take you to their websites. And I'm. The reason I proposed this idea is just as an interesting way to engage the public in giving them of some formalized training and uh giving them some ability to take ownership about of some trees that are within their capability in Carbondale. But of course, we would want to know from Carl whether any of these things would be useful as a way to sort of offset some of his workload or, you know, as a way for all of us to educate and engage more people and get them excited about trees. Um, and also, I don't want to take uh any attention away from a more pruning, a more high priority project like the codific, you know, unifying the codified and non-codified language. But anyway, uh, these are just some interesting ways that people in other cities have gone about creating a training program and a way to acknowledge that people are um capable of stewarding trees.
Yeah, how about some discussion on this? This is a, I think, a really interesting perspective. Um, you know, bringing in um the people that enjoy the parks and the, you know, the other roadways, right? And just bringing them in to have some ownership and understanding really tree growth. And um, like you said, stewardship. So um have you actually been a part of something like this?
Yes, I was a, uh trained as a citizen pruner in New York. And and also in Pennsylvania, so numbers two and number three. Um, and then I went on to get my actual arbor certification training, which is even more comprehensive. But um, and then in addition to pruning trees, people also participated in activities like, you know, maintaining the tree grates or mulching or seeing that they need water or weeding. Um, so yeah, I just think these are interesting um interesting programs that we could consider as a way to um fulfill our mission as we're deciding what our mission is.
Um, one question that comes to mind, and Carl, maybe this might be of interest to you, is I'm wondering um if something like this could um positively um create a, a greater sense of protection of our public trees. I mean, one of the things that I I have paid more attention to is just the um, you know, we have lots of, of all ages, individuals in our community that see a tree. And it kind of becomes a thing. And yet, we know that it's much more than that. And I'm wondering if something like this has the potential to really expand the thinking around a tree and what it represents to us. And what, what are your thoughts on some of that?
Yeah, I mean, I think anytime connecting people in their neighborhoods to public trees is a positive thing. Um, I think there's a lot of aspects of what I do is, I would call it tending. You know, and, you know, when I look at this list, like things like mulching, like I'm, that's an ongoing kind of thing, weeding mulch areas, you know, and re-mulching in the spring and fall. Things like that, um, I actually think it's really fun, um, cause you get to really be there with the tree. So um, like that one, I think connecting people to help with that, like that's definitely would help. Um, and like, yeah, tree grates, cleaning out tree grates, weeds and stuff, you know. I, I think um, it, it would definitely be worth thinking about further and, you know, how would it work for our community? Um, uh, on my side, I'm always thinking of risk, right? And like, you know, what situations are we putting people in? But um, I think there could be something here potentially.
What do you think, Vanessa? Maybe something along, maybe a pilot of some sort?
Yeah, um, or at the very least, uh, coming up with a, a training series. Um, so some of these are like a, you know, a five part, all the way up to like an eight part um training. And, and I could definitely offer to um, offer my services as an educator um for a training. And then maybe we could like pull the participants to see how interested they would be in taking part in some activities and um possibly go from there.
No, I was wondering, it, are any thoughts about how this might um align with any CRMS sorts of projects or curriculum?
Um, yeah, I, I mean, absolutely. I, I run a, like after school arborist crew. Um, and you know, most of it um exists on the CRM's property or pretty much all of it. And. But I could see, right, it'd be great if we can come out outside of our bubbles and come into Carbondale, you know?
Mm-hmm.
That would be really fun. And yeah, just through my experience with the, with the kids and pruning, um, you know, we do a lot of, kind of like ramen, you know, like trail, we have like trails that have need clearance, um, trees that have fallen or dead, dead standing that we kind of take out. But they're really, from my experience, there's not like a ton of pruning, you know, that we do. Um, and then the things that we do prune, we probably don't need to touch for like another five years.
Mm-hmm.
Um, cause, um, yeah, absolutely. I mean, that would be, that would be a joy to, to get off campus and bring them out.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Okay, so um, this sounds like a pretty good project. Um, we do have this identified as an action item, so that does allow us to do a vote of sorts or an agreement that this has a, appears to have enough value in our community that we could go through with something like a pilot, we could at least go through with some kind of planning. And so our.
I have some comments about this.
Oh, go ahead, yeah.
I would like to see something where people would have more buy-in before they started touching public assets. We, I have my experience in 2020 when I decided to go clean up some of the corners, cause they were so horrible. And everybody, I had probably eight people come and tell me, oh, I want to come and help you. Nobody was doing anything, no one was working, nobody was doing anything, and they wouldn't show up for it. So I'd like to see what kind of skin in the game we're going to put into it. I would be interested in seeing maybe having an educator series for backyard pruning, so people would have their own trees to work on. That would be an informational lecture type of thing, maybe a PowerPoint. And then have them present what they have and let them cut on their own trees before getting to this. Because you've got one guy who's got to do the work of two people right now. You're doing all your assistant work as well, correct? You haven't had an assistant for two years now?
Uh, it's been like a year.
But didn't you lose, didn't you lose Allison midway in 2024?
Go ahead.
So the, the labor issue, you have a labor issue, you have a liability issue. This is a very subjective project. It's in the eye of the beholder, so I would like to see us move slowly on this and maybe not touch our own work. You're doing a pretty nice job. We've got smaller trees that have been cared for for quite a while. When we had a stewardship program, we, we didn't get a lot of interest. And then it, it fell apart due to lack of interest on the part of the public. We were still doing it. It was tree board people who were doing it. And we were cutting off suckers and we were training some of the smaller trees. And that was in the nineties and early two thousands. So those trees are twenty-five years old now, thirty years old now. So we need to keep that in mind.
Yeah, so I think, oh, go ahead, Ross.
I was, I was gonna, I was gonna make two, two thoughts. One, one of my thought, I mean, al- along the sort of liability side, I imagine, you know, New York and Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, um, and Denver have, like, some of that's not reinventing the wheel. Um, and I think, I think we could probably figure out a way, you know, to, 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 to take care of liability and just general like concern, but people, obviously, we're not gonna send someone up, climb it up, up in a tree. Um, but, but then also, I mean, one of my thoughts, looking at this and sort of the way I, I looked at this excitedly would just be like, it's just the tree board. Like, the fir- the first bit's not, we're not trying to go out and train other people. It's just, it would be the tree board doing, getting their hands dirty um initially. And, and be, and using that as sort of, they'd be the, the whatever, what would, they would be called. Um, and I think there's something to be said for like getting the hands in dirt and, and getting a little bit closer and feeling like, feeling like we're doing something. And then, and then that would be, in terms of having a pilot program, I, I think that might be the easiest way to just, just limit it to people who've already expressed some commitment. Um, and all of these programs, I mean, if, if you read the, the fine print, it require, you know, a commitment to a certain number of hours or whatever, and we could divide the number of trees by what seems reasonable, I think. Um, but I would, I just, I wouldn't want to be in a position where we're giving Carl more work in the net, that the net, that the network is, is that. But hopefully, I could see it being something that's a real, real positive, um, real positive experience and give some people some more training and allows like a, a community to, you know, to ask more questions. I mean, that, those sorts of experiences, you're, you're in the public, you know, whether you're, when you're dealing with public, public trees and, you know, the right T-shirt. There's some good conversation.
Any, how about Dan, Meredith? Any perspective?
My, my, my only, my only comment is this. Um, uh, like Carl, that he's a little worried about the uh liability part and safety part. Um, one thing is, previous arborists ask us not to prune trees. Um, esp- newly planted trees because um he was wor- they were worried about us not uh, uh, pruning too soon. You know, like some of the new trees have been planted recently. I'm su- I'm sure that Carl looks at, and it is probably not gonna prune for three to five years. Um, uh, because they're a smaller statured tree till they show some real growth patterns and stuff like that. Um, we, we did do this li- like in the past. Um, and the reason that the tree board did it was because there was no town arborist up until two thousand and five. Um, and, and that, so, but it's a, it's a great idea. We had tree stewards, I still have my badge. Um, we, we had pretty good interest in it from tree board people, uh, and that. But I think, I think Ca- Carl needs to direct us of what he would like us to do. That's my comment.
Okay. Meredith? Okay, um, what I want to um, uh, these are, this is great. Um, it sounds like there's a lot of potential with this concept. Josh, did you have any, did you add anything to it?
I guess just to summarize and, and maybe kind of uh expand on the links is, um, I think the trial period's a great idea to, to see if this is scalable. And you know, if the decision after this trial period is like, you know what, then maybe this is better kept to two to three people or something like that. That could help Carl on a volunteer basis, that might be the way to go. Um, the other piece is that, I, I think the issue that I see coming up is that this is gonna be a people management issue, where I don't want fifteen people calling Carl talking about, you know, this tree that they found in the park and, you know, him having to respond and answer to those calls. Um, but like Carl said, there's a lot of low hanging fruit. I, I see no issue with maybe like on a annual or biannual basis, we get like a class of fifth graders to go out and mulch all the trees. It's a low risk, low stakes kind of thing. If they do mess it up, we just move the mulch away from the trunk. It's not a huge deal. But it keeps down, you know, maybe a full week of work for Carl into a day or two of, of, of getting the community involved and, and uh, uh, spreading the good news about our trees. Um, so overall, I think it's a good idea, but I, I, I think it'd be good for us to have a, a bit of structure when it comes to the trial period and, and how that could possibly expand depending on what we find.
Thank you. Um, I think just going around, we, we're uh feeling that, that there's positive, there's a lot of positive aspects of this. Um, going back to that project orientation over the last, um, I don't know, at least three meetings or so, I've been presenting these concepts of project orientation. The idea is that we have an idea, we develop it into uh more of an actual work plan. Uh, we follow the concepts of the project orientation. Um, so we don't jump right into an implementation. There is planning, there are identification of the risks, the liabilities, um, the resources. We go through all of those steps prior to actual implementation, even of our pilot program. With a pilot program, we want to make sure that we have a point of iteration where we come back. Are we doing what we thought we were going to do? Uh, if not, what do we need to tweak? So that, there are lots of steps before we actually get to, you know, what we would call a full implementation. Um, I think if we even were able to talk to some of the people involved in some of this, these programs, they would, you know, there would probably be some guidelines or even um some tips that they might provide to us on um getting started and what to manage as you go along. So um, however, with regards to this as a project for the tree board, it appears from what we've said that it has um some good value for us to work on. Um, is that, you know, that's what I would like to know, is, you know, can we in this meeting um identify this as, you know, putting some effort towards? And, and seeing if we can get something, it may not be, you know, we'll have to determine what the timeline is. But uh, is there anyone that would, you know, is giving it, you know, do we have any kind of like, you know, big stop or big red stop sign, no, don't go forward with at least having discussion on this as a project? We're not at implementation yet, but as a project.
Um, I guess I would be curious to hear, I mean, again, it probably falls on Carl of like the amount of work that there is actually to do. You know, I think that would probably get me more excited if Carl was like, oh, yeah, we have, we got, I got tons of trees that are, you know, need pruning from eight feet and below, cause that's really what we're talking about, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, or if Carl's like, there's actually not that many, then, then I maybe it's not worth the time, right? If there's, so that's kind of, I guess, where I'm at. Cause as I look around, you know, as I look around Carbondale, although, although the sea limits are probably more vast than my everyday uh, you know, footprint, but I don't see a ton, you know, in the public right away that is eight feet and below that would require too much pruning. I know we don't, we probably just need like a single tree that is accessible for one training. Um, but, you know, I, I think the idea, like when we look at um places like Denver and Pennsylvania and New York, they obviously have large parks, right, that have, that are well-planted. Um, so anyways, that's kind of where I'm, that's where I'm at. So I'm like, I could get excited about it, but it just depends if there's actually any work, like a good amount of work to do or not.
Mm-hmm. So in terms of um, you know, identifying that kind of uh outcome, um, and it, what I hear you saying, Noah, is that it's really a lot more, we really need to focus on like a proof of concept a- as part, as maybe the primary step. You know, is this even a worthwhile effort? So I could see us spending time on, could this be valuable to this town? Or does it need to actually be something a little different?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think it's valuable, it's clearly valuable to other places that have the, the need. I'm just not a hundred, like I just want to, would like to know that we actually need it. And then, then I feel like I'd be more excited about it.
Yeah. So, and that would be a reasonable step to do on a project plan.
How about instead of starting with surgery on animate objects, we do something to gauge interest with something like deciduous winter condition? So you could, and I'm thinking it's pretty damn dark out there right now, so it'd have to wait until February or March. But some kind of a tree walk to look at structures and look at damage and look at how you would approach a tree like that. Then you'd be able to look at larger things and smaller things, you wouldn't have leaves on them. You could see what persists on a tree. We could look at all our bare damage and do something like that. And you could, you could go into different sections of the town, or you could select a fruit tree or a large shade tree and go about that and get some education that way. The other thing about pruning you need to know is there's timing on it. And it's not like you can really go out and prune every tree whenever you feel like it. So things that are fruiting trees are often times done late winter. So that is, you know, you don't want to go and prune your apple trees in July. You don't want to prune anything in July, it's too hot. But that may be a good way to get people educated on what the goal would be and where the trees are and what to look for without using an instrument.
Yeah, so what I'd like to um try to reframe this uh is that what, i- if I, if I bring this up to a, a higher level, um, the idea is a um, a, a program that involves citizens in, in an active way in our landscape, in the town landscape. Um, really what that outcome is gonna be, whether it's pruning or working with mulch or whatever it is, you know, we, we can kind of work on that outcome. Um, what I'm wondering from this group is if we go to a higher level and we start to work on the concept of uh involving citizens in some sort of uh hands-on activity in the community that is similar to a uh maintenance sort of activity like, like tree pruning is. You know, does that have, uh, is that, is that an opportunity for us as a tree board to um use a, use what we can do, which is to um, uh, you know, work on the definition of the pilot, uh, definition of um, uh, risks, definitions of outcome? Um, you know, can it be a foundational component of other types of projects that we do later on? So that's what I'm kind of wondering, you know, with this group. I- i- if this idea doesn't, you know, kind of sit well with us, we can think of something else. But it has a lot of, um, in my mind, has a lot of um, um, factors that would be really, that would allow us to go through a project planning activity and would allow us to um, you know, kind of come together as a team or as a group with that kind of work. Um, anyway, that's what, that's the value I see with this. What, what, what the actual um implementation is, that's kind of out there. But at least it would allow us to um start working on, how do we, how do we take ideas? How do we put them into place? And then how do we sustain them? Any that, just ideas, thoughts on that?
Well, I really liked the idea of like a tree walk, an educational tree walk. And I really enjoyed the tree walk we took with Carl. It was kind of like a nice way to do some community bonding with the, between the humans and with the trees. Um, and, you know, the underlying goal of something like this is to get people excited and engaged about trees and with the tree board, um, and learn more about trees. Um, and I agree that we definitely would want Carl to identify whether there are specific tasks or specific trees or specific areas that could lend themselves well to some sort of um community assistance. And then I'll just mention that uh two things I'm already involved in that kind of lead into, you know, somewhat of a pilot are that um I'm an instructor at Colorado Mountain College in the community education. So I often teach classes about um either pruning or just tree care. And so um I could, there could be a tree care or a tree educational series that's part of Colorado Mountain College, but might be. series that's part of Colorado Mountain College, but might lend itself to some sort of collaboration with the tree board. And then also, in the spring, I collaborate with Uproot Colorado and a few other organizations to offer free community fruit tree pruning workshops, where we prune trees on public, I mean, on private land, and on people's backyards, and so that could be another opportunity for either a collaboration or just kind of like a pilot program. And, yeah.
Who's your audience when you're teaching those classes? Are they younger, older property owners? How do you get?
Combination, the age range is wide, and mostly they're property owners, but in some cases, they're not, and they just want to have an opportunity to do some hands-on work.
I would like to know how we're going to approach finding interested parties. And the, the skin in the game part on this, I mean, there are some really great teachers in these areas. So, I mean, what, you have eight hours on one of these, right?
Yeah.
You're not touching anything until you've really gone through it.
Right.
It's like a master gardener program for trees.
Yeah.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, again, thinking of some of the models that are out there, you know, pretty well-developed outcomes, well-developed curriculum, this is kind of a, you know, I want to say grassroots sort of effort for us here in the town. Certainly, we can look at a lot of other models that have been in play for some period of time, what are their suggestions, you know, don't go down this rabbit hole, go, I'm, I'm thinking of something that would allow us to develop something specific for our town, whether it's pruning, or whatever it is. But is this an opportunity for us to look at some of these programs and think about what would work for our town? It seems to be, from the discussion we've had, that a citizen involvement has a lot of appeal to us. And, you know, that's, maybe that's the one thing that we can all agree on, maybe that's one thing that we say, yep, we do agree that citizen appeal involvement is important, and then how do we do it? That, but whatever we do, I'd like to, I'd like for us to use it with that project orientation so that we are on the front end, really loading a lot of that work on the front end of risk, liability, definition of outcome, who are the interested parties, all of the things that have been raised here tonight. Um, yeah, so definitely, I'd like to encourage us to, to see this as an opportunity, and, you know, can we go forward with it as a concept?
One of the first things we could gauge response from is maybe something on a water bill to people about winter watering, because it's November 20th and it's still dry as a bone. So, if we were to put a, put a statement out with a little question, maybe we could gauge some public interest that way. We're, we're pretty well into an open droughty winter already.
Um, yeah, that's, that's a pretty immediate sort of thing, that I think requires a pretty quick turnaround, right, at this point right now. And what I'm, I'm wondering with this group tonight and this concept is, do we have, have we generated enough conversation, enough thought, to be in support of the concept of something like a citizen pruning program? However, perhaps it's the model of that, more so than the actual pruning itself. So that's, that's what I'm looking for, to see if there's interest in this group, to work on ideas through a project orientation, so that we can create something that has that sustainability, versus, you know, kind of jumping to the implementation, we're actually going to go through the steps of the pilot, identifying risks, outcomes, that sort of thing.
Well, I would propose that we just let this sit for now, and like, we think about it and talk about it again, because I feel like the update on the tree ordinance municipal code language is more important to prioritize.
Okay. I noticed you were, yeah.
I, I do want to emphasize too, that I think, you know, as, as our group continues to develop more projects, I, I think they're all equally important, and, and they can happen simultaneously. I think it does mean that I need to have some self-restraint and not sign up for everything. But, uh, to Vanessa's point, you know, this is the first time we've really talked about maybe the drawbacks and of the other positive features of this kind of aspect, so I wonder if this is just, over the next month, I assume we're not going to have a meeting in December, we'll, we'll regroup in January, and in that time, Carl can have an assessment of what are the actual needs of the community, to address Noah's point, figure out what those pieces are in addition to what the comments we've made, and then come up with a kind of a presentation similar to how we did the ordinance of, these are the findings, this is the general timeline slash number of items that we discussed and are possibly looking to implement and complete, and then we can have a more formal kind of yay or nay discussion on it.
Okay. I'm, in that, that time, in the time off, so to speak, the one thing I want to really focus on is bringing that work back to this board, and not really passing anything off to Carl at this point. And I think anything that we're going to research, we need to be able to carry on our own.
Absolutely agree.
Okay.
But at the same time, I, you know, if Carl doesn't see there that many trees that need to be pruned, then we, we just won't have that in the program come, when we talk again in January. It's, it's more of a assessment of, of what are the needs, and how can a citizen program or a model of, of this program can, can actually be implemented.
Yeah, okay.
Rather than have Vanessa do all of that, and then we come back and say, oh.
Okay.
There's not anything that, that can be accomplished with this.
Yeah. So it would be fair to determine, you know, does the town, would the town benefit from a citizen-involved program? Yeah, we do need to answer that, yeah. Absolutely, okay. Any, any additional comment or discussion on this? Okay. Say again?
We need to define our audience.
Yeah, we need to determine if it's, yeah, if it's a value to the town, yeah. Okeydoke.
We have, it's, how do we, how do we have participants? How do we have them in a timeline? How do we educate them so they stay in? How do we bring more people on board through time?
Yeah. Okay, any other comment, any other?
Well, I'll just say right now, like, mulching would be helpful.
There he goes. We know mulching is a good one.
Like, honestly, if it's like, three people, like, it doesn't have to be, you know, even if it's like, just twice a year or something, right?
Citizen mulchers.
It could be like, you know, it doesn't have to be, you know, too complicated.
That is, there's more, there, there is an, an art to mulching, and, and.
There's education about mulching.
There's a lot of education around mulching, so, okay. Vanessa, thank you for bringing us to the board tonight, bringing it to this discussion. It sounds like what we're going to do is, right now, there is no action on this at this point, we will consider our thoughts on this and then come back in January, and it sounds like we'll probably revisit this, you know, in the future. But it, but it definitely is, it, it sounds like at least a model of it has some value to the town.
I have a question for Carl. When you were trying to put together the Adopt a Garden program, Carl, now we have Be Friendly.
Joanne, what I want to do, just really quick, is, if you have a question for Carl, what I'd like to see is, Carl, you know, I have a question, is this a good time? I'd like you to ask him.
Okay, this is regarding this, though, about actual people.
I just would like that, yeah.
Okay. When you were trying to put together the Adopt a Garden, how many, and now we have Be Friendly, so I don't know how much follow-through they have, so these are programs that were proposed, and my point is the labor part of it. When people went in there, people sat with Adopt a Garden and it continued to grow weeds, correct? Has that been resolved by Be Friendly, and have they had a sustained enthusiasm? I think this was their first real summer of it.
So, I'm, Joanne, you're really taking us off track here with that kind of question. Can, is it something that?
It's a labor issue to gauge interest and sustainability of the interest of the citizens on a program that is similar to what we are discussing here.
But we're not at that point of making decisions on that, and we're not.
It's not a decision, it's just a question on if he can answer what kind of enthusiasm was sustained. Please.
Well, it's, it's really off track on, you know, with what we were talking about in our agenda. So, I just.
We're talking about putting citizens into a program, and I'd like to know what kind of sustained interest we've experienced on something similar.
We completed that discussion, so we're going to move on. Okay. Um, okay. We are then, Josh, our information-only item, update on the ordinance, and your alignment, your language alignment, concept.
Yes, so Vanessa reached out about joining, I guess we'll call it a project committee, I'm not entirely sure what the language is. I haven't been able to touch base with her about it yet, so I don't have too much of an announcement. I think, based off of our last discussion, all of the points still stand. I would be interested in hearing from the rest of the board, as you have time to read through it and digest what, what I presented on last time, and formulate your own opinions, if there are any suggestions of things that is not included in the guidelines that we provide as a tree board, that you'd like to see, so I can, so that way the project committee can consider that, as we're looking at language and seeing what gaps there might be, anything of like that. And I've been able to create a more formal priority list, based off of the last presentation as well, and identify a couple other points, but our committee hasn't kicked off, so I don't want to jump ahead without, without having the information.
Um, when, right now, it's you and Vanessa, right?
Yes.
And then you, you know, CC me on whatever you, I, do you have any, have you talked about when you're going to try to meet, or, nothing yet, okay?
No, I haven't done anything.
Okay, that's okay, that's okay, you know, I, we appreciate that you're doing it. Just let us know, you know, where you're, when you plan to meet, and what your progress is, and, go ahead.
Luckily, I think if it's just going to be two of us and nobody else joins, I don't believe we have to do an announcement or anything like that, but if, if somebody else does join, let us know, and then we'll create the formal announcements.
Correct. Yeah, three or more. Okay. And it has to be publicly. Okay, thanks. Does anybody have any, anybody have any comment or input or thoughts for Josh and Vanessa?
I have a question for Ross. I was at the meeting when they were making changes to, I believe, the UDC, about electrical, updating all of that? That was a staff member who presented that?
Yes.
So what was the, are you aware of what the process was for them to bring that to the trustees to codify the language? Was that a, like, the E-Board went to them, or was that just within the staff to make the updates? Because that was done rather easily at the meeting, I mean, there was a lot of work behind it.
We, we make changes to code with some frequency, it's usually, you know, proposed by, or, it's, it's put together by staff and presented to us, and, you know, embedded by, by our attorney and making sure it's all, you know, hunky-dory in that respect. I don't know a lot, I mean, generally, it's, it's put to, given to us on a platter and, and ready to go, but, so I can't speak to it, like, the hours that it takes to, to make those changes, but, but those, but, but things, you know, can be tweaked, sometimes it can be a small change, where we kind of, with some frequency, make small changes just to kind of address modernity. But, but bigger changes and sort of more, kind of fundamental changes are, aren't impossible by any means, but, but need to be well-considered, because I think what we, what we generally don't want to get away from is sort of piecemeal additions to any particular ordinance.
Yeah, what we have right now is fairly obsolete compared to what we've got going on, on that side of the building.
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there any other comment or discussion with, for Josh and Vanessa, on what they're going to do, or what they're thinking about? Okay. Meredith, you had asked for some discussion on alternate member, the alternate member roles and responsibilities, would you like to lead us off on that?
If you are, we can't hear you.
I think that, I'm not sure. Ellie, I'm wondering if you can, just in general, give us an idea, you know, at the high level, alternate member rules and responsibilities?
Um, yeah, happy to. So, this board is allowed two alternate members, and the main role of an alternate member is to assist in creating quorum. So if there's a member that's unavailable, a voting member that's unavailable, then the alternate member can stand in and make quorum.
Dan, Dan, let me use his phone, because I don't have a microphone on my computer, I guess.
Okay, okay, can you hear me?
Can I, I can hear you, I only have a phone to look at, but I can't see you.
Do you want me to continue speaking, or would you like to say something?
Um, I just wrote down what I wanted to say.
Okay, go ahead.
I could read it.
Go for it.
Okay. Each of Carbondale's volunteer boards, oof, I've got to catch my breath from coming upstairs fast, seems to consist of seven members with one or two alternatives, or alternates, and two or three town staffers or council members as advisors or liaisons. Nowhere in the ordinances can I find any reference to the role or responsibility of either a board member or an alternate board member. Among many similar authorities I found online, the Code of Federal Regulation states that the purpose of an alternate board member is to replace a regular member who will be absent for a length of time, for whatever reason. Lawinsider.com states that an alternate may, quotes, "step in to ensure a quorum and perform assigned duties of an absent member until a successor is appointed," close quotes, "to fill the same, to fill that position." An alternate member is assigned by the chair to replace a specific member who is absent or removed for an extended period, not to temporarily fill a vacancy. None of the articles I reviewed online indicated that an alternate should be, should complete the term of, of the absent member. Alternates are not generally expected to become replacements in case of a vacancy. As to duties and responsibilities of an alternate board member, as a non-voting alternate, I have undertaken to keep up with the minutes of the recent meetings and have been prepared to reassume a seat if a regular member is incapacitated. I am willing to attend meetings, preferably remotely, to have a more complete understanding of the minutes. The tree board and Carbondale's other volunteer boards might want to consider defining the roles and responsibilities of their members and their alternates. That's all.
Uh, well said. Uh, yeah.
Yeah, there's just, there's no definition, there's no definition anywhere in the code, in the ordinances, the law, that says what a board member's duties are, not to mention what alternate members' duties are, or responsibilities.
Yeah, I think most municipalities follow the code of the state and what they kind of apply to their boards and commissions. and what they kind of apply to their boards and commissions. But you're pretty spot on with that. It's not very common for a member to kind of just disappear from a board and then an alternate assume their seat for an extended period of time. It's generally just if there is a member absent, an alternate can assume their position during a meeting and also assume the responsibility of voting. So there's no real responsibility for you to kind of assume a member position in one's absence.
Right, the chair would have to nominate.
Yeah, unless it's to make quorum or to vote during a meeting.
Correct, the chair would have to, to, I think, to institute that, that duty.
Yeah, or, I mean, because it's Carbondale, it could just be, it could just be a conversation amongst the board and that position could be offered to you, but you don't have to assume it if you don't want it. You could stay in alternate position and then a member position would just open and be available.
Right, if you look at, if you look at the, the boards and commission seats, there is one board that has a vacancy and an alternate. And the alternate has not stepped into that position.
Correct, because they're, they don't want to.
So that's all I wanted to say, I have no job duties, but, but Kay and Ally were suggesting that I continue to read the minutes and I, I do, so.
Yeah, and I would just check with Lisa in advance of the meetings to make sure you don't have to show up to make quorum. I would assume that as like a responsibility for you to make sure that.
Well, I can sort of, I, I can see it from Zoom if I zoom in. And if there's, if I need to be present, that would be a different story, but.
I would still recommend you reach out to Lisa just in case. Then you don't even have to zoom in. But yeah, it's also, an alternate doesn't technically need to show up to a meeting if, if there's a known quorum. So feel free to join or not.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there any other comment or questions on this topic? All right. All right, we are in the last part of our agenda here where we've kind of opened the floor up to our tree board members. Anybody want to start us off with just observations, comments? This is kind of a, it's an open floor sort of thing, anybody? Okay, I'll go ahead.
No, I.
Nope, okay, I thought you were waving.
Trees look great.
Okay.
Carl, there you go.
What I've been thinking about is, and you've been hearing me present this perspective on project orientation. One of the reasons I like it is, first of all, it makes us, it gives us a structure. And that structure, then, others can observe and say, oh, this is what they do. This is how they do it. That's, I think that's an important characteristic of a board. What, what can you expect out of a board? In doing so, what I'm going to be thinking about over the next, our break here, we're going to break for December, we'll meet again back in, in January, is I have been working on this idea of shifting our calendar to have us less active in kind of the off-season and more active on the on-season, specifically the spring, summer and kind of early fall. And so what I want to come back to this group with is a, what would be a calendar for 2026. And then again, some outcomes and project orientation again, you know, with each meeting that we do. I think that as we continue to adjust and develop ourselves, this board in relationship to the development of the town, as the town is developing structure, governance in certain areas, just the other things that we're seeing, our, our town is changing pretty dramatically. I think it's important for us to also be in that same, you know, ship. We don't want to, we don't want to be left, you know, behind. We want to adjust and adapt as our town is adjusting and adapting to the many changes that we have here. So part of that, I think, would just help us to kind of identify our activity and get those, get that out to the public and get that out, especially to our, the trustees, I think, would really appreciate that too. So that is going to be what I will be working on during our break. Anybody else have some, like Josh and Vanessa, it sounds like you might be doing a little bit of work together. Anybody else want to share some of their comments and observations that, during this break that we're going to take? It's an interesting time. I've, I've also noticed how big the sky seems without all the leaves. It's kind of a, it's a really interesting perspective sometimes, like, oh, yeah, there used to be, you know, a canopy and, and it always surprises me every year. But that was, I was riding around, I can't remember, somewhere a few days ago and just noticing that our trees have no leaves right now.
I plan to pick the brain of a friend who's a city arborist for City of Berkeley. He's in charge of their planting, so he's, he loves to experiment, right, with new breeds and species of trees and what's going to grow in the climate. So, yeah, I'd like to pick his brain about, you know, what he's planting and just keep thinking about trees that would thrive in a place like Carbondale.
That's great. I, one of the things, things that Carl has brought up is how the idea that, again, you know, everything is shifting, everything is changing and being able to bring back to the town, these are new species, these are new hybrids, what, you know, but new recommendations is always valuable.
Yeah, I've been working on updating our street tree list too. So that could be a topic at some point.
Absolutely, yeah. Anything else?
The conference that was put together last year about the water issues is having a follow-up. And if the Lord keeps the roads open on December 2nd, I may go down there to see. We, we had a meeting there, everybody split up, we had four different divisions. And this was developing curriculum standards, rankings for different people working construction, irrigation, maintenance and design. So it's all supposed to wrap up this December. We'll see if the roads are clear.
That's, I think, a really, going to be a really interesting conference.
More presentations, we wrapped it up.
All right, Meredith, Dan, anything?
No.
Okay, well, everyone have a great holiday season. And we'll meet back here third, Thursday of January, I don't know the date yet. And thank you very much again. May I have a motion for adjournment?
Oh, motion to adjourn.
May I have a second?